So for a result, obviously, Mayor is out dealing with family stuff this week, so you get the backup for it works out today. First, I wanted to have Paul present on a rubric that the Budget Committee's been working on. This is kind of to serve as a kind of a guideline to use. And so, obviously, we've been, they've been talking about it in Budget Committee for a couple of months now.
Yep.
Frank and Paul and all that, so just want to give him an opportunity to kind of share with what they've been doing in Budget Committee. So Paul, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you. It's getting passed around right now. There's three documents. One is the rubric, the other is an FAQ that I put together that's got some high-level, frequently asked questions that I've been getting, that I just make it clear on what we're doing here. And the other is kind of some scoring definitions to help departments deal with this. And so what, the reasoning for this, there's a couple of things, and I'll just kind of give you a general update on what we've been working on in the Budget Committee. One is a prioritization exercise. And so, we're going to pilot this with some departments that are here inside City Hall that are non-operate, they're non-capital intensive, so these will be like the Mayor's Office, HR, Finance Department, purchasing. And so what, what this is, is a tool, okay? It's a, it's not an end-all-be-all, a score does not equal, you know, a score does not decide outcome, but it's a tool for us to use. It's a tool for departments to use to go through a thought exercise on what is important and why is it important. It's a tool for the Budget Committee to use to help sort and organize what the needs versus the wants are. It's a tool for you to use when you come to appropriate, come May and June. And so, the way that this works, this will be applied, the fault is that this is applied at, eventually, this pilot program that we're going to do over the next couple of weeks will help us gain some insights on the how this is working. We'll continue to refine that. This is a working document, this is not the end result, this is the phase one of what we're trying to achieve. And so what you'll see on the rubric scoring sheet is ten different categories. They start with what is the tier level of the particular project or capital request that you're asking for. And so that can be a tier A, B, or C, A being the highest tier, B being the low, C being the lowest tier. And what those look like are, I can quickly explain, tier one is those things that we are legally mandated to do. So that is, we are legally mandated to provide police services, we are legally mandated to keep up the roads. These are things that are either found in TCA, they're found in our charter, or we have a municipal ordinance on the books that requires us to do. Tier V are things that are expected of a city that's our size. So that could be a planning department, that's engineering department, public works. These types of things are considered necessary at the size of our community, and so they would fall into that tier V. They're absolutely essential, but they are very much expected. And then tier C would be, would fall more into a discretionary function, so those would be cultural programs, those parks and rec, the parks would fall into tier B, but the programming would fall into tier C. The cultural programming, those types of things, and there's some definitions that you can read through that, they kind of go into more detail about that. The other items that we'll be looking, is there a legal, are we required to do this, are we in a lawsuit on something? Those types of things pop up from time to time, and if we are, then those need to be priorities. Public safety risk, we'll judge it, judge that from a scale of one, zero to three. Infrastructure preservation, if it's preserving our infrastructure and extending the life of that out, we rate that on a scale of zero to three. Community demand and equity is another thing that we'll be gauging this on. So, what is the demand? Are we serving ten people, or are we serving seventy thousand people? There's a scale across that. Do we, do we have, another question that comes up is the economic and fiscal impact, are these things that we're doing, if we decide to implement Tyler Munis, right? Tyler Munis should, by the end of its full implementation, take workload off and give us a return on that investment, and I see him nodding.
Just four or five years.
Right, we're going to get there eventually, I'm sure, but those types of things, when we implement new technologies, they reduce the workload, there's some return on that investment, investment, so we, we have a scale to judge that. Leverage and match, do we have a grant for this project? Do we have private funds that are, that we're matching with this project? Those types of things can move a, move a request higher up the line. And all in all, what this has given us is a, is a good framework, a common framework for all departments to operate on. The other things you'll see are timing and urgency, is this something that can be pushed off for a couple of years, or is this has to be done today? And then, a more recent item that we've added, coming out of our last Budget Committee meeting, was, does this align with our existing planning? As you all know, we have plans out the wazoo, they can be our master plan, our ADA transition plan, that we've come up against a couple of times more recently, our PED plan, MPO plans, other types of planning documents, if it's found in there, then you get a, you get a score based off of its alignment with that plan. And then last, this is for capital items only, is what is the capital, what's the asset life? Is it something that has no asset life, or is it something that goes out beyond fifteen years? The scale takes into account for that. So the way this would work is that we will sit down with clusters of departments, we'll, as I said, we're going to start with some of those in City Hall, but then we'll do smaller cohorts, for example, we have the Police Department as its own, Fire Department as its own, we'll probably do Public Works and those types of departments as a cluster as well. We'll sit down and walk through them, and the idea is to start working on their current budget, and to go through to get a baseline of where we are today. That baseline, we'll update that every year, every two years possibly, there's still some discussion on how frequent that would be, but that gives us a baseline. Fast forwarding onto sometime in March or April, we'll start having these discussions about new proposed budget. So Parks and Rec says, hey, we need a new piece of park equipment. They go through, they, they lay out, they run this piece of park equipment through this rubric, it gets a score. We collect, we have Police Department says, we need this new piece of police equipment. They run through, we gather all this data, we go through, and now when you get your budget requests, there'll be a score associated with that, with that request to the side of it. So you'll be able to identify what, what is of highest priority to lowest priority. And does that mean that everything under a certain priority gets cut? No, that's where, that's where the discussions happen. What I'm trying to do is remove all of, where everything's on the same playing field, let's get some hierarchy to this, to what we're talking about here. What we'll be working on, so I've walked you through a real high level, you've got the frequently asked questions. I'll share with you a couple of other things that we're talking about, if you can spare me a few minutes. So, in the Budget Committee, we've been talking about, we first want to tackle, in addition to this prioritization exercise, we're tackling your existing revenues. Today, we talked about your city sticker, we've got a group that's working to talk to the Clerk's Office and the Police Department to work through how we're operating on that, if we're getting the full amount of revenue that we should, if everybody's buying a city sticker, and what that process looks like if you're not buying a city sticker. My recommendation is that it should be an automatic ticket. If you get pulled over for a traffic offense, you get a fifty dollar fine, and you got to go buy a twenty-five dollar ticket. That should get everybody into compliance on that. The other thing that we're working on, and Stan was going to look into this over the next couple of months, is working on making sure that we're covering costs appropriately for our engineering, planning, and those types of services. These are things that were brought up at your last, at your last budget cycle. My goal is to get these discussions going now, rather than later. We can have these discussions now, get these wheels in motion, so that when we come back and it's time, we have a better idea of what your revenue projections look like. A couple of other things that we talked about today are the vacant property ordinance, which we've got to have some more discussion on that, and there's a few others that are out there, I think we've talked.
The downtown, if they want actively renting, actively trying to sell it, that was another thing.
That's, that's the property ordinance, so there's some criteria that allow you to get out of that. Some of the discussion that we've talked about is, is that, what are the, what are the legalities around this current ordinance, and do we need it, or do we just need to get away from it? I share with you, my opinion is, I think it needs to be equitably applied, if it's applied. Right now, you've got a person paying it, and you've got, everyone else is not. So we need to figure that out.
But we did talk about too, that there's more activity, so there's less buildings that are being built.
Less, yes, yes. But it is really good, because a lot of the time, three, four years ago, we did implement this, you would have to think about the police and the fire going into an abandoned or vacant building, not knowing how it was, what could happen, when they went in.
And that was what we had talked about, was having some kind of view in, at that time, we had seen somebody had gotten into the old Demus Mill and climbed up the tower, and there was, you know, those types of tragedies were happening, and we had positioned to use this to be able to get Fire Department in there to do a safety check on it, but as well as spur along development for a change of ownership, where you don't have people sitting on it to laugh at it drilling. I use the example of this one off Chester and Royal, where you can see the roof falling in. That, if, if we were, if, if we had been kind of collecting that and saying on top of that, that potentially could have had that change hand and have the capital improvements necessary to keep that from happening. So there's a couple of things, and we've got a whole tool chest that we worked on in the Code Committee previously, to supply Stan and his team to work through some of this, but that's just another one.
Richard Donnell is on the phone, listening in, so.
Hey, Richard, how are you?
Any questions?
Hey, Kansas. Thank you. So, that's kind of where we're at right now, there's been discussion, just to kind, and I don't know if Nathan's going to give you an update, we've had discussion on the bond issuance and what's in and out, there's some opportunities, I think, that may be coming down the pipe to remove some, some of that, but we still have some discussions that have to be had on that, but those are the things that we've been working on for the last couple of months.
I have something I'd like to add to that, and something that I'm trying to watch is grants. This is something you and I talked about when we were on a previous council. Grants sound so good on the front end, but then it's the third year or so, how are we going to pay for that? How can we put that into our planning?
Right.
So, as a Budget Committee, is there some way we can kind of track that?
We can talk about that in a little bit, actually.
Okay.
Abby is going to be talking about something else, but we'll talk about that.
Okay, good deal, thank you.
So what, under this rubric, we will look at it from both ways. So let's say we have a grant that's an operating grant, which is what you're talking about, right? So that's running a program to get it kicked, kind of get it started, and it's going to run for three years, and then the funding, that funding goes away, and it's on the city to maintain that. We could look through this, and this, this rubric will let us identify longevity of how long that grant, so if the grant is of a shorter timeline, it's going to get a lower score than it would be of a longer timeline. Then capital grants, so let's say, I try not to pick on projects, and Nathan. You've got a paving machine that has an operational cost to it, but it also has capital cost to it, right? So if you were going to analyze that, you'd analyze it for both. They would have two scoring sheets, one for the capital side of it, and one for the operational side, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So those, that's kind of the way that we're framing this up, is to work through this in a systematic way that really levels the playing field for everything, and bubbles up the things that are of the highest priority, to make sure those things get funded. Having been around here for the time that I have, I see sometimes we kick cans or promote things, that maybe should have been, we should have taken care of this thing, but instead we've done something else, and this will help alleviate that, I hope.
If we had had this, we wouldn't have been a year late with the risers in the civic center.
For, for example, there's a, one that I'm aware of, there is a, a safety issue at the net, right? That to get up on the roof and put in some new HVAC, we got to have a rating, right? That should rise to the top.
It really should.
Those are the types of things that I'm hoping. We get these things that are safety issues, you score this, it's got a safety, safety score on here, it's going to score as a three, because OSHA is requiring us to do it, there's a legal obligation for us to do this thing. These things should rise up, and, and so that may warrant itself to be funded over something else. So that's the direction we're going in. The Budget Committee decided to proceed with this, and like I said, this, this may change, it may shift, based off the feedback we get from this first wording group, but this is the direction that we're going in.
Paul, you're suggesting that we use this on what we're working on now?
The goal is this first go-round, so here in December through January, we will go through our current year's budget to train department heads on, is, is the idea.
More like a practice exercise.
It's a thought exercise to get them understanding, well, we're not just throwing them into the fire when we come to Budget Town.
I'll just, there's nothing wrong with you looking at it when we're trying to discuss things and bring them into the conversation. It's always the best, do we absolutely have to have it? I would think good for you to use on your own planning tool.
Right, and that was just saying though, that we want to make a conscious effort of what's going on right now, to freeze as much of it as we can, and get a jumpstart, jumpstart of this program, because if we wait for another year, everything we did this year, and we know we might mislead this year, go through them, anyway, that was.
I think that would be, if you want the Budget Committee, like each budget amendment, we can run through this moving forward, you know?
But a lot of things that we deal with, it's not the, it's, it's, we got money from insurance to fix the police car.
Oh, well, that's.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not like they're doing stuff.
Ninety percent of the stuff that comes through, the typical budget amendments are
pass-through dollars for, like the ones you'll see in your packet today, because we, you learn here at our, like, you're getting money for, that's going to pass through from a grant to another, or something like that.
I hear what you're saying, I don't disagree, I just think that it's going to take department heads a minute to wrap their, I think going forward into the next budget season, for sure, right? But, I mean, I'll disagree, I just think it's, it's going to take a minute for everybody to wrap their head around the process.
And for the Budget Committee to review the initial ones too, to get feedback, so.
So much of, I'm just, I'm just saying, we have a tool here, as soon as we start using this tool, the better off we are.
And they're starting.
But we are starting.
Well, and that's, so, one of the things that we had a conversation, Nathan and I did a week or two ago, about implementation of this, and I kind of had to pump the brakes just a little bit, because there was the want to, let's get this thing in, like what you're saying.
Let's do it.
And I want to make sure that it is a useful tool, right? And so let's make sure, let's, like, take a month, run through this, we'll get a lot of feedback from dealing with, from dealing with these first couple of departments.
Well, keep in mind, when it comes back, then it's got to be dealt with.
That's right.
And by the council, so then we're automatically going to approve it or not approve it.
That's right.
And trying to apply this to the current year's appropriations, you guys, you guys made those appropriations, and the departments began planning based on that appropriation, they've already signed contracts, even if you haven't gotten a budget amendment to deal with it yet.
That's right, sure.
And so it'll, it'll be hard to say, I mean, some of it certainly, you can look at and say, yeah, it's just something we really want to make a decision on now, especially if it's new money, but for things that you've already appropriated, it'll be difficult in some ways to pull that back at this point.
Yes.
I understand all that, my thing is just the process in our own brain, what we go through, is how we could implement it in our own minds, not maybe all the steps, but how we can implement it looking forward.
What I'm, what I'm hoping is that, I said, you know, this should be a tool for department heads as well. So as they go through their thought process of, what am I asking for, what am I needing, they, they can start to kind of separate the cream, you know, separate the cream from the crop, and say, this is, this is really what we need to be focused on, these are the things, and they have a good sense of that, and don't get wrong, but this will help them quantify that into something that can be compared to another department.
But it will give us a better picture.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is there a way that it can't be skewed from departments, like if there's a need?
Great question. There's a question, seven, eight, or nine in here, we'll answer that, is, so the way that this works is there is a normalization that happens. So your department, the police department, every, every department really thinks that what they're doing is the most important thing, and that, nothing wrong with that. So the way that this will work is that, all department heads would rate this, the Mayor's going to have an opportunity to rate, rate them as well, now he's going to blind rate them, so your, your rating may be different than his rating. That would come back in to Nathan's office, Nathan has an understanding of what the conditions are, but you're, we'll see your score, we'll see Scott's score, will help normalize at the Budget Committee level, so if you say, well, I'm legally mandated to have a splash pad, we know that's not the reality, right? So we may, we're going to adjust you, and we're going to make a note, we reduce this to a one rather than a three, and, so there's a tracking that goes, happens to call off. So yes, there is normalization, and we will look it over, that way to keep it from getting skewed out. There's a recommendation, and what I would say for department heads is to read the frequently asked questions first, because there's, if you think it's a three, but you don't know if it's a three or a two, our suggestion is to rank it as a two, is to be as conservative as you can about it. And so, you really don't want to over-rank it, because that would start skewing it, there'll be too many adjustments. But that gives us an opportunity to continually train on it too. We see that a department is over-skewing theirs, we can go back and say, hey, look, let's have a sit-down, walk through these, to help you understand how to score them.
What, what does, how do we rank citizen demand?
We will handle all of that, I don't want to get too bad with the departments, we can handle department questions at enough time.
Yeah, no, we'll, so our goal, and I've, my time?
Yeah, I know, just, we got other things that we got to get to too, so that's all.
I'll share it with you right here. Hey, thank you all. Any other questions?
Paul, so, item four under first reading, is that the income neutral or not, for budget neutral? It's moving eighty-nine thousand dollars from one category to the other.
Right, technically, it's budget neutral.
Okay, now if they come back with another amendment later to add the eighty-nine back in, they have to justify it.
That's right.
Those numbers can sound familiar from today.
That, that's, but it's a good point, is that, what is it going to do, it's going to make us think.
Right, right.
It's going to make us pause and say, hey, if we're shifting it now to only shift it later potentially, let's pause and think about this, and is this the best course of action? I'm not here to say it is or isn't, I'm just telling you, this is a tool to make us pause and think about this stuff.
Thank you, Paul.
Uh-huh.
Okay, next, Tony and Chrissy, you want to talk about the PR?
Yeah.
She's there, she's helping.
Okay.
So I do want to preface this by saying that we did meet with the skate park group today, so they're aware of where, to where we can still do it, and ultimately, the decision was made that it would be underwhelming if we moved forward. It would not be, it would not be something that they could enjoy, and it wouldn't be something that we felt like the taxpayers would feel like was a good use of money. So, we provided options to our board, and I was going to look for Paul, but I think he stepped out, so Paul is our board chair, but we provided some options to them, and ultimately, last Tuesday, in our meeting, they voted to change our scope to Melissa's Park, which is in South Jackson. So what we plan to do with that five hundred and fifty thousand dollars now is do LED lighting on all the ball fields, change the tennis courts to post-injection concrete, so both the upper and lower court, one of them will be restripped as a pickleball court, so there'll be six pickleball courts, the other will be striped again as a tennis court, and then we will start addressing fixing needs. A lot of the backstops that, there are six fields out there, a lot of the backstops are in desperate need of fence work, we will start there, and just until we run out of money, we're going to be, you know, just.
I get asked a lot about the walking trail, as far as repaving that.
It's, it's, it's due, it's actually.
It is due, but it needs to, it, I would want to wait and do that project when we can make it ADA accessible.
That's exactly what I'm thinking.
Instead of just repaving it, absolutely, actually, being intentional, and then doing ADA accessibility for it, I can tell you that that's probably going to be a million-dollar project for us to do that and do it right. Some ADA upgrades will be coming to Melissa's, because the way that this grant works is, if they fund it, that you have to provide ADA accessibility to anything that we use that money towards. So, so the only drawback of doing this is, we spent the design grant funds for the skate park, and those are spent. So we will have to, we cannot use grant dollars to do the design for Melissa's, and design fees are between five and ten percent of the overall project, so we're probably looking at about fifty-five thousand that we're going to have to pay down, that we can't, we will not get reimbursed for, because all the design fees have been used.
Is there opportunity in the future for a skate park?
Yes, so, so what we talked to them about today, we are not, we're not abandoning the project. We know that it's needed, it's in our master plan, we had a lot of support, they had a lot of support. Um we know that it's needed, it's in our master plan. We had a lot of support, they had a lot of support. Um so I think some things that Abby's gonna share with y'all, uh she's gonna start looking for some grants. The mayor wants us to try to find a grant that has a better match leverage um than, because this was gonna be a fifty-fifty. If, you know, maybe there's a seventy-five, twenty-five, or an eighty-twenty out there that we can go after. Uh but we did let them know that we're not, we're not abandoning this at all. And they gave us some feedback and some ideas that we're gonna kinda talk with some other departments and see what some options are. Um but we have to send a letter to the state saying that we are changing our scope. Um so, you know, we met with the mayor on Thursday, let him know, and he asked that we come and discuss this with you all today. Any questions?
How much money are we having to put up?
Two seventy-five.
And Spies putting up an equal amount?
Yes, it's a fifty-fifty, and it's already allocated. Thus, we already have those funds in the budget this year. We will just be changing our scope from the skate park and reallocating to Melissa's.
Does that include the new design fee?
No, that is not included.
Fifty-seven?
About, between fifty and fifty-five.
That's new money.
That would be new money.
That's the question, is the new money.
That'll be new money. Um and I feel like once the state approves us um to move forward with this, it'll probably won't, that probably won't happen till January. We'll enter design phase at that point. We'll probably be in that for three to five months, and then we'll break ground. You know, we'll put it out to bid and break ground.
That's for Melissa's?
Melissa's.
Or all the things you mentioned?
Yes.
Okay.
All the other parks are, uh two of our parks are under destruction right now, Shirley Mercer and Wallace Road. Um all the other parks break ground, save the way.
So how much money are we spending overall total on all the parks this year, capital?
Um. Seven? I mean, that pro- that project alone, we, we received uh one million eighty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
Yeah, totally LPRF is right up.
But we also have RTP, which we're gonna talk about tonight, and we have a lot of.
So we don't have a number of the city's portion.
I mean, certainly, certainly, certainly something I can get for you, but I'm only having my mind.
That'd be interesting, though, that's what Paul was mentioning earlier.
Yeah.
Um I do have a couple of questions. So you all met with the skate, I just, I just wanted to make sure how that went. If they were heard, because that's something about three years that they've had the meetings and.
Yeah, this group is very, these, these young men were very receptive. Uh basically, at the end, the bottom line is, they want something. And it doesn't have to be some massive thing. We talked about, we talked about some concepts that other cities done, like skate parks under overpasses, those kinda things, and we're gonna look at some of that. Uh they talked about the ramps that are at Muse, if, if we could just maybe do the concrete and uh fix that, and and they were, they were very, they were very receptive. They understood uh the situation. The reality was, when A T H put it out for bid, they underestimated actually the concrete with the, with the, with the rebar, and it's very, it's a, it's a specific type of concrete, and it was five hundred thousand dollars more than what they thought it would be.
Yeah, and it, it's a specific supplier out of Texas. Both bids we got, the same supplier for the structural concrete. And they were, they underestimated that by more than a P G F U.
And we did, I did, you know, I did make the point to them, and they were very understanding in that you've gotta measure the usage, what would be the usage. I told them to be very honest with me. If you built a million dollar scale, how many people would use it? Uh and they, they were very un- honest about it, that at this point, just from Jackson, probably not a whole lot, but other communities would come in. So in the future, it's, it's talking about that, so.
So they, they say it goes, if you build it, they will come.
But they want, they just want some.
Yeah.
I, I just appreciate that, because they've had a lot of meetings and a lot of work.
Well, that's why it was important for us to meet with them before we presented to y'all tonight, because with us being live, I didn't, that's the last thing I will need to bring them to handle this.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, like this, so and they, they really appreciated us bringing them in and having that conversation before it, it went out.
Is there anything that council is that you're weighing from council?
No, the mayor's gonna sign off on the change of scope um later, and that'll go to the state, and then it'll be up to the state. There, since you all have already approved the money, um there's, there's nothing, no action needed for you all.
And then there's one other thing that the state has done uh over recent years, because they've gotten so much money. It used to be where if you had an open grant, you could not reapply for a grant, but now they've changed that where even if you have open grants, you can apply for the same grant from that same part of the money.
Yeah, so that, we are weighing the option of, of applying for LPRF in January. Um the mayor is, he's kind of mulling that over, um and he said he would, he would let us know if, if we should move forward with that application or not.
But now we will be, if you are asking for a fifty, sixty thousand dollars for design.
At some point, yeah, probably in the spring.
So if we do this, we're committing to that, I'm not.
Well, the money's already.
The money's already here.
The two hundred.
He's talking about the design.
Yeah, I know that, so you can just throw the two hundred thousand away?
Well, maybe, but.
No.
I just let you know one thing, like citizens are liable for, and they're liable for, and don't get me wrong, additional fifty to sixty thousand for the design.
The design.
That is correct.
That is our design.
And that's what I was asking, so if we vote in this, she's asking for fifty, sixty thousand.
Correct.
But we're not.
Are we voting? I think we're.
We're voting on anything right now, Larry.
Which is, we're, this is just information.
Information, but, but I can tell you this, if you send money back to the state from a grant that you've gotten, the chances of you getting grants in the future is slim.
Abby's nodding her head forever. She is, yeah.
And what, and yeah, we felt like this was the best project to move forward with, you know, JP's from out south, I'm from out south. Larry's from out south. If you, you know.
I'm not from out south, but we play ball out south, so I mean, we usually.
Yeah, it's a very well utilized part, um so.
Yes, it is.
Nick can't, we shot down south.
One more thing before you sit down, thank you for everything you did as a senior citizen. Uh I know everything was out of your control, but I wanna say thank you for all the work that you did and sticking after that. Thank you.
And throw in there for the senior citizens there, too.
Well, that's what it was. That's what I said.
I heard one, later here talking about.
They were still on front row quick, it's Ron's capital.
Yeah, okay, so next on the list, I wanted to have Abby share a little bit with you. Uh so Abby's been two months in her new role. Uh kinda the tweet uh role at Laurinfield, where we have her really focusing now on two things. One is data usage throughout the city, improving the data that we have, and then also applying for and finding additional grant opportunities. One of the first things we did was just to do a little uh employee survey about all our employees in terms of their satisfaction, retention, and recruitment, you know, as you uh have done some of these budget hearings, you've heard a lot about retention, recruitment of new employees, and so thought, we found some interesting findings from that, and just one, thought it would be uh interesting for y'all to hear what our employees are saying about why they work for the city, why they wanna continue to work for the city and all that, so go for it, Abby.
Um I guess, would it be easier for you all if I come to the table?
Sure.
You wanna do?
Whatever's.
This is a work session.
Yeah.
Work session.
Whatever's easier for me.
We don't wanna make Turtle bit jealous. He hasn't said the title.
Well, um yeah, so like Ron mentioned, uh several weeks ago, we launched the uh citywide employee survey. We had really good feedback and results from it, so I'm excited to share with you what we've gleaned from it. So we had two hundred and forty-six responses, which was very impressive to me. That was in a um one to two week time span. And we had some really great candid feedback from employees.
How many did you consider, actually?
Every city employee.
Every city employee.
How many is that?
Seven.
Yeah. Um and so usually for response rates, you're looking for like ten to fifteen percent is like a decent rate out of all the people that you administer to. So two hundred and forty-six out of seven hundred is pretty good for us. Um and so I just wanted to highlight some of the positive things that employees mentioned, so um employees consistently say they like working here, they enjoy working for the city, and they enjoy serving the residents. Um and then a few of the things that they point out consistently is um benefits package and pension and job stability are very crucial to staying with the city, and something that they feel is one of the most important things about working for the city. And so one of the things that we asked in the survey as well is, how long have you worked for the city? What's your age? What's your department? Those kinds of general things. And so out of the responses, what we saw is that a large majority of our workforce is in that forty-three to sixty-five age range, so we have more of an aging, mature workforce. And so it's something worth noting that only ten percent of the responses that we got were from that twenty-five to thirty-four age range. So we have a younger percentage of young workers working for the city, and it's something that might need to be looked at in the near future, is kind of planning for those replacements and how we bring in younger employees to work for the city to replace all of these people that will probably be retiring in the coming future.
Are those numbers, people that returned the form, or that overall number for the city?
The ones that returned the form. Yeah, so this is not, uh it's not kind of everyone, but just of those two forty-six. Um and then something interesting that I wanted to note is that a quarter of the people who filled out the survey have worked for the city for more than twenty years, which I think is really impressive. That's a great tenure. And so we asked several questions about um what brought you to work for the city and why do you stay here? So when you applied to work here, what was the number one reason? What were the top few reasons why you decided to apply? And then now that you work here, what's your favorite thing about working here, and then why do you stay? What keeps you from going somewhere else? And so what we saw is that pension was number one across the board by far for both attraction and retention, and that was across all ages, all backgrounds. Um it was much more um common across the uh older age ranges, um like forty-three to fifty-five, but the younger age ranges still noted it, just not as commonly. It wasn't fresh on the mind. Um health benefits was very highly ranked as well, uh number two for attraction, and also ranked, I think, in the top five for retention. So a lot of employees come to work here because they know we have good benefits, they know it's stable. Um and then along those same, same lines, um employees also mentioned in the survey frequently that they wanted additional benefits. And what I learned through reading through those is that they're often mentioning things we already have. So they're mentioning they want, um you know, childcare assistance, they want uh the free clinic back, they want um gym memberships. We have all of those things. We don't have the free clinic, but we have free teledoc. Um we have the dependent care F S A. We have, you know, reduced gym membership reimbursement. Um and so our employees are not taking advantage of those because they're not necessarily aware that they're available to them. So that was something really important for us to understand from the survey. And then secondly, job stability also ranked very high for retention and attraction, yes.
So um annually, you have a re-enrollment? Do you not, is that not made aware, are they not made aware of that?
They're, they're informed that it's time for annual enrollment. I think the issue is, is that once you've gone through orientation, if you don't sign up for those benefits initially, you don't given the full information of what all the city ha- has, and so.
And it's a lot of information coming at orientation, and I, you know, was thinking through when I was reading all these responses to the surveys, you know, I have a new baby, and so now the dependent care F S A is important to me, and I'm taking advantage of it, but I only, you know, really knew to take advantage because I remembered us covering it in orientation, but that was only, you know, four years ago. If it was twenty years ago, I don't know that I would remember, and so it's something that we're kind of revisiting, is how can we um.
I hope nobody's in the childcare now twenty years.
I know.
That's a mess up there.
But how can we get that back out, in, fresh into the minds of our employees, yeah? So how can we kind of, on a, you know, a regular basis, send out reminders? And I'll get to it later, but we thought of some kind of targeted marketing that we can do to our employees.
Wouldn't H R help you with that, to me, as a component of them?
And risk management.
Yes.
And uh job stability attracts talent that competitive pay remains a core retention driver? So where do we rank, did you mention that? And I was not hearing.
Yeah, so job stability and pay are both in the top five for retention and attraction.
And why they're here?
Yes.
Okay, so.
So job stability is higher for attraction, so why they come to work here, because they know it's stable. And then uh pay is very high on why they come and why they stay.
Okay, so then we do have a competitive salary workforce.
I'll get to that on the next slide, I think. Yeah, um and then work-life balance, it was interesting to note, it becomes more important as people work here longer. So the longer people have worked here, um the higher they rank work-life balance, so it's very important to our employees who have been here twenty, thirty years, that they have more of a work-life balance. So as you mentioned, the pay, um one of the things that people commented frequent- frequently is that, you know, while pay is very important to them uh to come work for the city and to stay here, they feel like, because inflation is rising so fast, that wages are not necessarily keeping up with, with pay. Um and I know that's probably across the board everywhere, but that was a consistent theme that we saw um ac- across all departments, all ages. And one of the things that that pointed out to me is that if we want to retain, especially the employees who have been here a long time, and who have that knowledge and the skill set um in their field, it's important to consider keeping up with competitive wages as a retention factor. Um especially those experienced staff, like the ten to twenty years, uh identified pay as a major reason why they decide to stay here, so if it's consistently being outpaced by inflation, that might drop. Um and then we asked employees to also rank a few different factors. Um support from leadership, recognition, clarity of job responsibilities, uh things like that. A lot of employees, um really mostly, were pretty satisfied with the clarity of their job responsibilities. They felt like they had a good idea of what was expected of them, um but they did feel that recognition could be improved. Um and so a lot of employees mentioned they felt like they could, you know, get a little bit more recognition for going above and beyond, um or, you know, doing things extra outside of their scope of work. And so also employees noted that they wanted some more training opportunities, not only for themselves, but for their department as a whole, or maybe for their leadership. And so we kind of took that as an opportunity to look at how can we boost morale through recognition for employees? And one of the things that we uh talked through was doing Employee of the Month, um recognition for employees. So just something for department heads to nominate employees that are going above and beyond, doing a great job, um and then recognize them, you know, across the, the city, and say, thank you so much for.
Went out uh yesterday and already have gotten seven nominations.
Right. Um and then I mentioned this earlier about the benefits, but what we noticed is that there is a significant gap between what we actually offer and what employees are already paying for, and the city is already paying for, and what's being utilized. And so we are going to take an opportunity to kind of market this internally, like I mentioned, with H R, um directly to those employees who can benefit from it, so yes.
Back to the pension.
Hmm.
We may be the only organization that has a pension. Hospital's done away with it, county's done away with it.
Corporate did fifteen years ago, corporations.
So important to note, that's a big reason why people continue to come work here. Um and so we'll take, this'll be a work in progress, but taking a look at how we can market specific benefits to employees that will use them the most. Um and so like, for instance, fire, our fire department, they mentioned the free clinic above and beyond way more than most other departments, because they were used to using it, and so we will be targeting them with things like teledoc. Um it's free, all of our teledoc appointments are free, um for a regular doctor, therapy, dermatologist, whatever it may be.
Don't think you're on the benefits.
Yeah, if you're on the benefits plan, you get teledoc for free.
So. I'm, I'm gonna go teledoc for healthcare part. Are they concerned about that because the pay, the co-pay, okay? Um do they, would they qualify to have affordable healthcare in a close community?
I'm not sure. I don't know what the qualifications are there. But I, from my understanding, our city used to do um free visits at the lift um with no co-pay. And so basically, that's transitioned now to a co-pay system, um but you get free teledoc visits, and that's unlimited as well. Um and it's a little more convenient even, because you can do it from anywhere, do it from home or from the office, wherever you need to. Um and so we need to get that out there and make sure employees are aware that that's something that can take that place. And so we need to get that out there and make sure employees are aware that that's something that can take that place.
I'm gonna jump back to pensions.
Sure.
We're talking about getting rid of away with it, but something would be put in this place that can be actually better for the employees. I didn't want to leave it like we were going to do away with something. But the county, I think, is better than before.
Well, you can't, yeah, I mean, you can't take away anything from already, uh, who's an existing employee, anything that you, that y'all want. If they're doing, we have to give a perspective.
County has issues.
Since we kinda stopped you for a second, the fire department, since you got to go there and listen to them, that is so vital, because a lot of them have two or three jobs to just supplement what they're making. So I would suggest in your outreach program, as part of this, you maybe visit each station and then put up something so they are actually themselves aware of it.
That's a great idea.
And we now have a conversation about kind of condensing, you know, they have certifications, they're paid different based on their certification.
I think they're looking at that, and what kind of streamline their stipends.
The other thing.
Especially the employee.
The other thing, Councilman Wallace, one of the reasons that they have struggled with is the regularity of pay. We're, we're working on a, on a program to normalize that right now, which will help, which will help with some of that.
And then this is our last slide, I won't take up too much more of your time, but just some of the recommendations that came out of the responses from the survey, one being, like I already mentioned, launching that internal campaign. That's gonna be a way for us to maximize, like I said, what we're already paying for, what employees are already paying for, without adding any additional cost to the city. So we're not gonna be incurring any more costs, but we're gonna maximize benefits for employees and also boost the perception of benefits package overall. And then secondly, looking at management training across departments to be able to improve communication within departments, and then make sure that all of our management have those employee management skills, and then also open the door for discussions on future trainings by department. And then lastly, looking at the employee of the month and other recognition opportunities for our employees to make sure that we keep retention at high.
Good job, Abby.
Thank you.
Awesome, just wanted to quickly highlight Christmas parade, and then we'll go into the agenda. Councilman Wallace, you had a couple of things you wanted to mention about the parade.
Yes, Marquita, what time or will you send an email out, what time we are to be at the civic center for all those that are riding in the city council parade? Okay, and your spouses are invited too, and last year, Julie was kind enough to DoorDash a hundred dollars for the candy, which she will not be doing this year.
You've seen the price of the candy?
Yeah, so everyone try to bring the candy that you want, the city will try and get some, but that was the other thing. And dinner, I'll go ahead and throw this in there, dinner is gonna be at the kitchen and catering, where we did two years ago. And so we're gonna have a really nice meal and everything that goes along with that. And I encourage you, bring your spouses or significant other, and I think mayor might have some other people that he's gonna, has to come.
For your information, it's gonna be a very long parade.
Okay, yeah, we did need to know what time.
The weather, the weather changed. Originally, it looked like it was gonna rain, but now it's about twenty-four percent. It's cloudy. The high is gonna be thirty-eight.
It's always so cloudy.
The school system has about seventy entries. Every school must participate. It's gonna be the lo, it'll probably be the longest and largest parade we've ever had.
So maybe eight o'clock.
What?
To finish.
So we normally.
Y'all will be finishing.
Y'all will be in the front. Y'all, y'all will be in the front. We've got the lineups done, you all are always in the front, so one year. But it's gonna be a very, very good parade. They've got several flows, they've got a lot.
And just in case the weather takes a turn for the worse, I, I guess the rainout dates is the next day, Tuesday, and then the third backup date is Monday the eighth.
Yes, we've got plans, and first look at the weather, it was gonna rain Monday and Tuesday. And so we talked with police department, and we backed up and had a backup plan for following Monday. It looks like we're gonna be in Monday. I think we only have one rainout since we've taken it over, and we did it the next night. Be prepared.
Well, we're excited.
Yes, I'm excited.
I have a little housekeeping thing, I'd like to pass this around for council members, so I can, we can.
And then I want to take a five-minute break, and we'll get around to the agenda review at five. Anything else? Go to the order.
All right.